It is now seven o'clock. The W C council meets called to work, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Cutlet, here. Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin, here.
I will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal from January first, two thousand twenty-four. Does it move?
Okay.
I have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Robb to dispense with the reading of the journal from January first, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Now come to the number of public comment. If anyone has public comment to make to council, we're invited to come to the podium. State your comment, name and address and your comment. Any public comment? Public comment from the other? Anyone received any public comment to care? Mr. Roberts?
We may, when ordinance ten comes up, two thousand twenty-three, we may want Mr. Dean to be available for questions.
Okay. It's a good observation. On ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three, we expect a comment from Mr. Dean on our go to enforcement officer. All right, let's move forward then to reports from standing and special committees. Finance Personnel Committee, council member Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone adopted the report in their packets, so I'm not going to go over everything in obscure detail, but we are going to catch on a couple of highlights. So obviously, even though this is a January meeting, finishing up the December books. So we did, at the third back page, we did cross that five million dollar threshold. So, yeah, it's a good deal there. Kind of surprised everybody, honestly, but we had a record December, the best on record. So it was good on that. Traditionally, we always go to the second page, we'll briefly touch on that. Bottom line is that because of the outlier in business, we were down as far as percentage, but if you look at its percentage of three-year average, which I think is the important part here, we were up two point two eight percent. So not too bad, everything considered. All right, to the front page, our cash balance in the general fund is one point nine million, less encumbrances, one point eight million. So very, very strong. I've said this multiple times, but, you know, ten years ago, when I first came on council, the first finance committee meeting, we were looking at a negative balance in the general fund and kind of slight panic was settling in. So to be where we are at, in a strong position, kudos to everyone who's worked on that the last ten years. Because of some transfers and such like that, the two-twenty income tax fund has a little more than what we tend to have normally, but that was just some bookkeeping stuff, end-of-year bookkeeping, so we didn't have to have a special meeting to take care of some stuff. So again, kudos for taking care of that. Appreciate that. All right, down in the, go to the utility funds, sewer, we have after encumbrances, two-twenty-three, and water fund, after encumbrances, one-twenty-four. So both of those are significantly in better shape than where they were earlier on in the year. So we'll keep on looking at that, but all is fairly well there. And the electric communications fund, after encumbrances, we're looking at three point nine, so a strong position there. Hospitalization is at five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty. There is a potential for us to be able to skip a monthly payment there to benefit us, but we're waiting, waiting for the first few months to go by before we look at possibly requesting that, but it's in a strong position. And then the light debt reserve fund was officially taken care of, so it is at zeros and will be removed from the sheet come our next finance committee meeting. All right, the next page, only real highlight here, increased fire police for the wages, that's the reason for the increase in wages. Obviously, there's going to be an increase in wages there, and we are kind of looking to see how the tax levy that was just passed kind of shakes out, so we'll have that for appropriation. Moving on, just going to go to the cash investment reconciliation. You can see that PNC Bank is cleared out there, you can see the light debt reserve fund also at zero, and in the city treasury, as of December thirty-first, we had fourteen million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. Sued a rush fund, that is everything on the financial side. On the personnel side, in the health department, Jennifer Frazier is going to be resigning as of January twenty-sixth. She's director of environmental health, and Beth Conrad officially retired December thirty-first. We're going to have more news on the police front in the coming month, and the line superintendent interviews are being conducted there. So barring anything made from my colleague, Mr. McGlocklin on the committee, that is it for that section of the report.
Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Martin in regard to his report? Mr. Martin?
I move that the combined financial statement, cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, be received, placed on file, posted to the city website.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts. The combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation, dated December third, first, two thousand twenty-three, be received, placed on file and posted to the city website. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yeah.
Mr. Barton?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Thank you, Councilman Martin. And I move to the Utilities and Streets Committee, Councilman McGlocklin.
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities and Streets Committee met this past Friday, January twelfth, and have four items to discuss tonight. First, the sewer lateral material revision. We'll be looking at that tonight in amendment ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-three. It's the third reading tonight. The language amended discussed for subsection K of the January first meeting by Councilman Cutlet, and I'll read it here. Subsection K, wherever possible, any sewer lateral that crosses over or under other underground infrastructure shall be placed eighteen inches above or below the other infrastructure. So at this point, Mr. Ensmann and the city engineer agree that the language makes sense. So we'll be looking at that. Item number two, the billing software update. The new utilities billing software is active effective the first of the year. The former software expired at the first of the year. We're receiving excellent support from the software company at Cusi and the city's IT management team at Centec. The conversion involved a tremendous amount of coding for the three different utilities and the many different rate structures. The system conversion will be audited by the state of Ohio at a future point. The utility staff and Cusi reps are still reviewing the billing system for operational and historical reports. In regard to our January electric bill, or utility bills, there were some printing issues and software glitch. Some bills were printed multiple times. If the customer receives more than one bill, they only need to pay one. Printing glitch, delayed printing from the normal schedule. Bills were delivered to the post office in two batches, January third and January sixth, six to ten days normal delivery. If a customer has questions on the receipt of the bill, please contact the utilities office. In addition, there was a recommendation for a late payment waiver, and so that's going to be in tonight's legislation in the form of resolution two dash two thousand twenty-four. By city ordinance, late fees shall be charged to utility customers when utility bills are paid after the fifteenth of the month. So tonight, resolution two dash two twenty-four will still allow utility customers to exercise their ability to waive late fee throughout the year, separate from the proposed mass January twenty twenty-four waiver tonight. Item three, the BASS project, battery energy storage system project and the north side substation equipment upgrade. G P V engineers did a load study. Different voltage regulators are needed at the north side station, the north express circuit, to allow for uninterrupted flow of energy from the BASS solar array and both one point eight megawatt diesel generators. Trip issues could occur if regulators are not changed. So some of the budgetary quotes and lead times for these voltage regulators were provided by G P V engineers. In fact, a month ago, December fourteenth, voltage regulators were forty-five thousand each, which totaled one hundred and thirty-five thousand, with a lead time of sixty weeks. A month later, just recently, on January eighth, these voltage regulators were one hundred and five thousand each for a total of three hundred and fifteen thousand and a lead time stretching to one hundred and six weeks. A P on site partners, they have gotten Tesla batteries for the BASS project. They ordered with a lead time of fifty weeks, and so the project commences January twenty twenty-five. In regard to the one hundred and six week lead time for the voltage regulators, this could alter the best saving schedule one year, the first year. The long lead times makes the first year, twenty twenty-five, a little more challenging, but still feasible project. Upon installing the voltage regulators, there are no unforeseen issues going forward. At this point, we have excellent project support. A D P on site partners are actively seeking vendors for the required voltage regulators, and G P V engineers are preparing a plan to support the maximum BASS output. As discussed last month, we need to move quickly on purchasing the voltage regulators for the BASS project, and the bid doc and emergency legislation are prepared tonight in the form of resolution three dash two thousand twenty-four. And then finally, the surveillance equipment project, Omni Fiber Communications and Centec IT Management are working together to establish IP addresses for each site. Additional equipment is needed from Omni Fiber, and they are nearing completion on that. Upon equipment installation, Centec can establish the IP addresses, and then once the IP addresses are established, vendors communications can install the surveillance equipment. That is all I have at this time. Mr. Matt.
Councilman McGlocklin, are there any comments or questions from Mr. McGlocklin in regard to his report? All right, thank you very much. Move forward then to safety committee, Councilman Roberts.
Thanks, sir. Safety committee hit me on January third. Fire news chief Thompson reported that it was finished year-end stuff, tasks, and beginning new year tasks. The ambulance that was ordered in two thousand twenty-two is still on the books. It isn't going to be ready until sometime in two thousand twenty-five, so chief would like to leave that on the books as it is and see if there will be a path to purchasing that when it is ready. So, you know, it's not current in this right now, and the company says, if you don't want it when the time comes, it's a big deal if there's a waiting list. People really want these things, but if something happens that we can afford to buy another one when that time comes, then we will certainly look into that. The also, chief also will start talking about adding on to the current fire station. We've added some personnel, and there's no place, I don't know if you've been down there, but there's no place for them to sleep. They're sleeping in a meeting room right now. So, you know, there's cops in there, it's just not, it's not a, it's not a really good situation. So that, you know, that's something we started thinking about last year, and something I'll start talking about this year, so we need more housing down there. In health department news, we learned as Mr. Martin said, Jennifer Frazier will be leaving on January twenty-sixth, so that process of fighting her physical will start soon. Medical disease report, we had one hundred and seven COVID cases, mostly in the two nursing homes, and only six hospitalizations, and that, you know, if COVID is still a thing, but we got to keep people out of the hospital, it seems like that's, you know, what the new variants, you know, what I did is make people hospitalized. We had one Hep B, two Hep C's, one had A. Health department started promoting the awareness of SARS. This is the time of year, seasonal affective disorder. This is the time of year people start getting, getting down about the weather, and so there's a flyer, and hopefully go out and the utility bills that has tips to, to, to curb that effectiveness, and so that, you know, that's, I mean, it's something that happens, and people need to be aware of it. And like I said, the flyers are out, and the utility bills, and that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Roberts in regard to his report?
Thank you, sir.
Move forward to reports of city officials. Very brief mayor's report this evening, or the last couple of weeks, I've been occupied with typical mayoral duties and delights. One of those delights was last Friday, pleased to participate in the grand reowning in celebration of the little shops of Shelby in our downtown district, so that was a very, a very nice affair. We have posted a peak alert for tomorrow morning from seven AM to nine AM, so several curtail their electric consumption for those two hours. It will benefit the entire community by stabilizing our electric rates in the future. Peak alert readings, I should say, peak event readings are a huge component of computation of our, the price of our purchased power. So bottom line, lower usage equals stabilized electric rates. So please take the peak alert seriously and turn down your thermostat and avoid using high consumption electric appliances during those specified timings. And I did send out an email here this afternoon, so I expect we'll discuss later our appropriations meetings in February, so I hope everyone has a chance to see that, but maybe on a miscellaneous, might be best, Governor miscellaneous, about getting together to begin our appropriations process. And so that is my brief report. Are any comments or questions for me in regard to my report? Hearing that, we'll move forward then to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. Nothing really unusual in my office as, you know, the calendar rolled over, so everything starts again. We are getting everything set up for two thousand twenty-four, and in the meantime, we're already in the thick of closing books and such for two thousand twenty-three. We've been in contact with the firm that does our gap conversion, makes our financials for the auditor, and so we're starting to give those reports to them and, you know, assemble all of the numbers for that. So that's really about it. Tax terms haven't picked up yet, they'll just start in early February. But for the most part, I do, I do want to thank Ms. Cutlet for all of her hard work, closing the books and getting things started. All I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crum. Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Hearing that, we'll move forward then to Mr. Geister, Director of Law.
Thank you, Mayor. I do, my vacation schedule missed your swearing-in at the first meeting, so I'd like to congratulate everybody on their elections and reacquaintments, and tell you all to look forward to working with you, do a lot of ten-year things together. Barring that, nothing further to report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geister, and congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
And I know you grow a beard so fast, but I'm jealous of that. Just in time, beard, I'll tell you what. All right, any comments or questions for Mr. Geister? All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Joe Geis, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Sanico lined-out sanitary sewer relocation project opens up on the twenty-sixth, so it's the next meeting or the fourth door, winner is there. We continue to work on our paving program. All the roads have been measured, our engineers done initial work for the curb ramps and so forth, so we'll try to get that to you as soon as possible, and then working on various period reports that we're required to do, so that's taking up quite a bit of time right now, so that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Geis, any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Mr. Robb?
Yes, could you, could you give us a little update, perhaps, on the burnout business on Main Street? What's kind of progress we're making on that?
So we've obtained consent from one of the property owners on each side of the building because they are shared walls and so forth. So there was an agreement, basically to hold the contractor, land bank, city, everyone not viable for it, something, you know, the contractor, the way it's freed, the contractor really has to screw up for them to, you know, hold them viable for that. So we're waiting on one to get signed. I know the land bank has the contractor selected, ready to go, we're just waiting on that waiver. We're going to get to it as soon as possible, so I've been trying very hard trying to hold that contract, that property owner with no available. We may try some other options next.
Mr. Robb?
There was some discussion or mention the possibility of saving that facade, where are we at with that?
Mr. Geis?
The engineer come in to look at the building, the land bank hired. It was brought up that that would be a very hard, very expensive option to do that. That's basically what you take away from the other side walls, it's by itself. He said you basically have to build another wall back behind it, so with the condition of the building and no funding to do something like that, it's likely not going to happen.
That would have been my next question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm looking forward to new business, any new business that we brought before council this evening? I'm looking forward to unfinished business. I know Councilman McGlocklin, I've been working on the Purple Heart Trail. Have you sent out someone by email or anything this evening publicly to report?
I'll just give a quick update. I've spoken, I've spoken with the district coordinators and the state coordinator as well, and so at this time, we're thinking that the proclamation will take place on twenty May. That would, that proclamation would make us like a Purple Heart city, and then on three June at our city council meeting, we might have some representatives from that organization come in here and do a little ceremony, where they would add us to the trail, so.
Is there signage that is provided, or do each city's purchasing all signage? Are you that far along?
We'll have to purchase those, so I sent that an email, examples that they gave us, you and Mr. Crum. For example, for us to possibly purchase two signs, one to be placed thirty-nine and one on the north end of town, where our B city entry city signs are.
All right, all right, thank you.
I think we can go ahead and order those signs ahead of our proclamation twenty May, so that we have them in place.
Okay.
You guys just have to pick which type of sign you want.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Mr. Martin?
I apologize, should have brought this up on the new business probably. The solar eclipse coming to the city, and one thing I thought about, is there a potential for us as a city to work to order the solar glasses with perhaps our city branding on them, for people that come to our city to watch the solar eclipse? I don't know if that would necessarily be a government function or maybe a chamber of commerce function, but I think that the administration should be looking for the possibility of that.
I believe the health department is looking to, with that, sort of the health department But yeah, you're online, I just wonder, a lot of those will come prepared, the eclipse chasers, but, you know, I mean, I offered it, plus to get a name out there, but I think most people will come ready to, ready to roll. We just had another email, did I share that with everybody today, about the solar eclipse? There's more, there's more information out there now. So, yeah, I've got it written down, Councilman Martin, we'll check into that. Good day.
Yeah, I found that email quite interesting, injecting the hundred dollars in the normal law.
Yeah, that would, that would increase your population by a lot. Yeah, I think they're tracking a little more fine tune now, and that puts some numbers into anticipated crowds coming to different communities, and that's fascinating. It's on its way. All right, any other unfinished business? Well, let's get into the legislation here. Mr. Crum?
Ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three, amending sections one thousand four hundred ninety point one zero, general exterior maintenance requirements, and one thousand four hundred ninety point one four, yard area maintenance, with chapter one thousand four hundred ninety, exterior property maintenance, and the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move for second reading. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robb and a second by Mr. Martin for the second reading of ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion, and everyone, I believe, received the highlighted version of this, so you can see the changes that were made, and again, we would invite a enforcement officer, Bob Dean, to the podium so he can answer any questions, which he may have, Mr. Roberts.
I would like to, I'm moved to amend by substitution.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, the second by Mr. Robb, to amend by substitution, and that substitute ordinance is in your packet, substitute ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three, substitute ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three. So that would be the motion to amend by wholesale substitution. Discussion, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, the first reading was March third, twenty twenty-three. It went to Public Works and General Operations Committee on there, the third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Dean took hold of it at that point, and really, I think, did a very good job of making this ordinance what it should be, so that, so that it can be enforced. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
Any further discussion? The vote will be to amend by substitution, substituting with substitute ordinance number ten to, uh, three. And then, once we get on the table as amended, and he will still make amendments if he so desire, that gives the amended substitute ordinance on the, on substitute ordinance on the table. Am I understanding?
Yep.
Okay. It's the vote then to amend by substitution. Mr. Crum, roll call.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
The motion to amend by substitution passes. Now, further discussion, and then I think Mr. Robertson, he'll complete, you had this before, you highlighted the highlighted division, and you come to the podium, Bob, if you would, please. If I may, just for a moment, I want to thank Mr. Geis and Mr. Geister and Bob for working so diligently on this, and as, as Councilman Roberts said, Mr. Dean really, really poured a lot of work into this. He's, and, and to Councilman Martin's point, when we brought Mr. Dean into this position, when she had done an admirable job, this was so long before we'd come, that someone who's in the field sees what's happening, sees the ways to improve what we have on the books, and, and bring those to us for you all to consider if there need any changes to make, to make our, our exterior maintenance laws and so forth more effective. So I think that's what's, that's what's before us now, so appreciate your work, Mr. Dean. So, discussion. Hearing that?
Mr. [inaudible].
I'm looking at fourteen ninety ninety-nine A.
I'm looking at fourteen ninety ninety-nine A. I'm not saying this needs to be done tonight, but it says the director of law shall institute appropriate action. I would like to change that to May. But also, a lot of these exterior property maintenance cases are brought and signed by Mr. Dean. We want, we may want to say the director of law or the mayor's or his designee may bring appropriate action.
Is that the last page?
Yes. Fourteen ninety point nine nine. That way, Mr. Dean or his successor can do that, not just my office or my successor. Again, it doesn't need to be done tonight, it's going to be up for the next one.
That would only be in the marked up version. It would be in the substitute.
Which is this one, right?
This one too, is the one. Yes, yes.
Substitute ordinance. Mr. Geis? I think just to clarify, that is the existing language that's in that ordinance right now. Right. So what Mr. Dean suggested, they just modified it. It would be an amendment to that section. Mr. Roberts?
I would like to amend that that sentence where it starts with director of law say, the director of law, the mayor or his designee may institute appropriate action at law.
Point, point of order. That's not in the ordinance. So not everything that's in the packets in the ordinance.
If I may. The only thing I included in the ordinance was what I had amended or what had been amended previously and the new language that Garland introduced for the junk vehicles. So if it, if the subsection stayed the same, then I left them out of the ordinance version that you're getting there. So you're exactly right.
Fair enough. Revoke any comment previously made by me to rewrite legislation for that. All right. So there is no second? No second necessary? All right, this is the first reading, is there one chance to digest what's before you? Further discussion, Mr. Martin?
Technically, this is second reading, so we gotta make sure that we.
Yes.
Do our homework for the next name, but the point, the point's well taken. I was looking at the definitions, specifically under blight. Can you just briefly discuss, just briefly discuss the ramifications of something's considered blight? And by the definition and why the definition to that is included?
Because I feel with the discussion with Lauren, our committee, Joe and the mayor, blight is such a subjective term. There was someone that said at some point throughout this that referred to an old Supreme Court case, a pepper form. There really is no definition, but you know it when you see it. So using some language from the revised code, I listed these As, Bs. Basically, that's what they use as defining, the thought, defining terms to define more specifically what, what can be considered blight.
Mr. Martin?
Right, so follow up question to that then. So if we're taking it for the Ohio revised code, like, could we eliminate certain things from these for our practical purposes? Or is this really just a reiteration for the Ohio revised code?
As council, you're heard to suggest any changes of what I've submitted.
All right. The reason I bring that up, just a few of these look a little bit subjective. And so I just want to go over that, and I will before next council meeting, but I just want to go over those. I just, so I just wanted to get some clarification about where those. Has it now, that's all I have.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cottrell?
I found a couple of things in there that doesn't have anything to do with Mr. Dean's recommendations, actually, but I kind of questioned him a little bit. So, looking at the actual ordinance, on fourteen ninety point fourteen, number two, the very last sentence, it says broken glass, stumps, filth, garbage, trash, debris shall not be permitted on any property. So my question is stops. The reason I take issue with that one in particular is because nowadays people happen to do things with stumps. They'll leave their stumps high and put carbings, wood carbings in and things of that nature. So maybe we should change the language to be like nuisance stumps. I don't know if it's a good idea to take the language out completely, but obviously, we don't want somebody spending a lot of money to have a carbon then. We don't want to, you know, take that off the property.
That's on the dashboard, is right?
Just above vegetation, just above the.
Vegetation, yeah. Just above. Then, Mr. Geis? All above. This is a section, one of those sections again, that was not amended for Mr. Dean had in there. So I'm not a part of the Ontario, but I would think similar. Need to bring back and add that to the next ordinance or? Mr. Martin?
No, I mean, it's in the ordinance and so we can, we can refine the ordinance as we see fit. So I think what it, my recommendation to all my colleagues would be, we now actually have a workable framework that we didn't have before. So now we can take a look at specific things. Because there were a lot of things, we understand, as that, that were broken, these things. But now that we have this workable framework, not only can we look at the highlighted section in the packet, but in the stuff that's included in the ordinance, then we can address that. I would also say if there are things here, that we feel do need amended, we can add that section to the ordinance by amendment and then further revise those sections. That doesn't need a separate piece of legislation. So, you know, anybody who has, you know, basically, if you see something that you want fixed that's not highlighted, that's something that was previous to Mr. Dean, the administration doing it. If it is something they have that's highlighted, then we can ask clarifying questions to Mr. Dean of why we included that. That would just be my recommendation. So if we could focus on the, since we have Mr. Dean here, we can focus on the highlighted sections. We have questions specifically to those since we have Mr. Dean here. And then we can all take a deeper dive prior to the next meeting. And frankly, if we need more time, we can postpone as we need more time. The goal is to get this right.
As far as you know, would you be available for the next meeting too?
Yes, sir. Very busy schedule.
You're hurting me. All right, any further discussion on amended ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three? Substitute ordinance, yes, thank you, substitute ordinance, number ten. All right, as we roll call vote on substitute ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three?
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Substitute ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three passes. It's second reading, for the second reading. Brain freeze.
Right, amended ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Amending chapter one thousand four hundred and ninety point one zero eight, construction standards and specifications of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for reading.
Second.
Does she, Mr. McGlocklin, or is that?
Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of amended ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion.
Well, I brought up something about this at the last council meeting, about the, would be section one, paragraph K. And it said, whenever possible, any sewer lateral that crosses over the underground infrastructure shall be placed eighteen inches above the other infrastructure. And after having some discussions with Mr. Ensmann, we are going to make an amendment to have, say, crosses over or under. So we'll put or under after or, and then eighteen inches above or below. So we'll add or below to that. And that's mainly to, what, they, your utilities can come in at different places and depending on what type of building you have. If you have a building with a basement, typically your sewer is going to be below so utilities going out of the building. But if it's a slab, let's say, it may not be, the water line might be below us. So it depends on the building, type of building construction. So that would be why you would want it to be above the water and reflect that, those different type of constructions.
Yes, the motion to amend, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Cutler and a second by Mr. McGlocklin to amend section. That would be section K. To read, it's on the back page. Whenever possible, any sewer lateral that crosses over and then placing the words or under after the word over or under. And on further, on eighteen inches above or below, adding the words or below the other infrastructure. That is the proposed amendment. Any further discussion on that? Roll call please on that amendment.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
The motion to amend passes. Further discussion on amended ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-three? Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Amendment ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-three passes as third reading.
Two for passing ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the passage of order, amended ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Mr. Roberts? Yay.
Amendment ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Resolution number one, two thousand twenty-four. Authorizing the mayor as director of public safety in the city of Shelby to apply for the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency mosquito control grant and declaring emergency.
I think the resolution would be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of resolution number one, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Mr. Roberts?
Just our yearly grant proposal for mosquito control. Sometimes we get some, sometimes we don't.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution number one, two thousand twenty-four passes.
Resolution number two, two thousand twenty-four. Authorizing the mayor as director of public service to waive the late payment charge penalty from residential, commercial, industrial utility account holders for the January two thousand twenty-four billing period and declaring emergency.
This resolution would take up and pass.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the passage of resolution number two, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. All right, roll call please.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution number two, two thousand twenty-four passes.
Resolution number three, two thousand twenty-four. Approving the specifications and authorizing the mayor as public, as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter immediate contracts for the North Side Substation North Express Circuit Voltage Regulator Purchase and declaring emergency.
This resolution would take up and pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the passage of resolution number three, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution, resolution number three, two thousand twenty-four passes. Now come to miscellaneous business. Miscellaneous business before council. Mr. Martin?
I move that we go into a committee of the whole to discuss the appropriations meetings for two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Robertson that we're going to a committee of the whole to discuss potential meeting times for our appropriations discussions. Discussion on our motion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion passes. I would like to committee the whole at seven forty-eight. Mr. McGlocklin?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think the last couple of years, we've had two separate meetings, four hours each time. So I would recommend at least one of those days be on a Saturday, like eight, until then.
If I may, in a discussion, I did send out an email that kind of proposed a couple of dates with that same, almost followed what we did last year pretty closely. The sixteenth at eleven, utilities and streets and so forth. And then the twenty-fourth at nine for the general fund. Those, those two time frames, fairly close to the time frames. I think we worked out a lot last year, so I'm open to anything there. Mr. Martin?
I know that. Oh, no, speak as you will, right?
Turning into chaos here. All right. I know that I'm not available till after school, so I won't be available. Me and I, obviously, compete on Saturdays, but, so I don't know if you wanted to do two separate Saturdays or meet after three-thirty. That would be my preference, obviously, but I'm just.
Understood, you two are in the same boat, sort of that way, right?
Yes, we're in the same boat.
And, oh, Mr. Cottrell, so.
I would prefer two Saturday mornings over.
I would prefer two Saturday mornings over a late afternoon meeting.
Mr. Martin.
Are we okay then with, the, the date brought here is Saturday, February twenty-fourth. Are we good for that being one of the days? The twenty-fourth of February, one of the days, Saturday?
I wouldn't want to get much later than that. Would everyone be available on the seventeenth then?
What order?
Seven.
Mayor, you got an absentee.
Mr. Mayor.
Seventeenth? It's all correct. Is everybody available the seventeenth? I just don't want to get too late.
Yeah.
We, we kind of worked hard to get these earlier, so.
I'm, I'm okay with two Saturdays, the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. Is everybody else okay with that? Okay, so Charlie, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Two Saturdays? Okay, so.
What time do we propose here?
Nathan.
Seventeenth, I think we, I'd want to start earlier because I have, I have an eleven o'clock appointment, so. I'm okay with the eight o'clock start. I think we've done that before.
Yeah. Eight till noon, both days?
Mr. Mayor?
I think we, we started with that suggested timeframe. You never know if it'll be shorter, but starting at least at eight on both days. Mr. Cuthbert will bring flat jacks and sausage on the first morning.
Let's do this, actually. Let's do it.
Okay, so at this point, at this point, everybody agrees, two budget meetings. One on February seventeenth from eight till noon and one on February twenty-fourth, eight till noon. Is everybody okay? Okay.
Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor?
And with that, with the same order, doing utilities and streets first Saturday and then the general fund the second Saturday?
Everybody okay?
I mean, we could fine tune this thing as it get closer, but that's the way we did last year.
Very well. Mr. Martin?
We'll create an order.
We have a second?
Okay.
A little bit of a scorching, second by Mr. Robertson to convene, convene the whole.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Council comes out as, as a, as a, committee of the whole at seven fifty-two. Any other miscellaneous business? Mr. Martin?
Mayor, the council adjourned. I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. McLaughlin and a second, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Martin and a second motion by McLaughlin for adjournment. Roll call please.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Motion passes, council adjourned at seven fifty-three.